Did my brother say something you didn't like or something?
No.
Oh.
No, I had a conversation with him though about voting. He said he seems to think that the paper is sufficient to find information.
Morning.
Good morning.
Okay, so I'm all late. Detained.
It's fine.
Okay, minutes, yes.
Under visitors, you spelled gos- Gospin instead of Gerspin. A point of clarification here, ambulance service, the students agreeing to commit 240 hours, is that a volunteer commitment where we pay them the volunteer rate if they get called in for service?
I believe you said they can do it both ways.
As a hired 240 hours, I mean I'm...
It's 240 hours of contractual time. They must give 240 hours to the service. It doesn't mean that we have to pay them an hourly wage. But they can take call time as a volunteer or they can be a part-time employee, either or.
It would be nice if we qualified that, just even for our own record. Sign it, it says, "As part of the grant agreement, each student must sign an agreement committing 240 hours to the service upon certification." Should we put volunteer or hired? Because basically what you're saying is after they get certified, we can hire them and that would be credited to their 240 hours. It doesn't have to be volunteer time regardless of them being an employee, correct?
So they committed 240 hours, I don't know if we need to specify how they did it. Some of them will do it volunteer and some of them will probably want to take some shifts, I guess. I think it's covered under the committing 240 hours to the service.
You also have that Robert Howe reported the equipment sale was 101,085 dollars. I believe that was Michael.
Yeah.
Who gave us the dollar.
I remember.
Did I not have with Robert Howe, Director of Public Works, Michael O'Hare? With Robert Howe present. So Michael reported and Bob was present.
You also left out that I asked for the map of the pits in the county. I'll move to adopt the minutes as corrected.
Second.
What am I correcting?
Gerson.
Gerson, correct.
You also didn't add, under all the discussion that you put for the road department, that I requested a map of the pits.
Are we adding it?
I don't have a problem with it.
It can go at the end.
Okay, so I'm gonna strike and prioritization of projects and add and...
No, you don't have to take the prioritization of projects out.
No, I didn't, I just moved it forward.
No, you said strike.
Strike the word and.
Oh, excuse me.
And then I added or removed prioritization of projects and gravel pit map? Map of the gravel pits.
Mm-hmm.
Got it.
Okay, so we have corrected, from my clarification, you corrected the spelling on Gerspin, right?
Yes.
And you added a map of the gravel pits?
Yep.
And that's all you've done?
Yep.
Do I have a, I have a second. Do questions? All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Pose. We have a letter here, support for Lincoln County Historical Society's application for grant funds. I believe we already said we would send ones. I think it's just a matter of us signing the forms.
I think we're already good, didn't we?
Yeah.
You might want to read it, make sure.
I guess, I read it.
Okay.
Oh, no, this can't be acceptable. Okay, you have to have a comma after properties in that second paragraph in the last sentence. And you, we hope that you will look favorable at Lincoln County Historical Society's application. That has to be favorably. Sorry, I can't put my name on that. Does anyone know what this $95 balance forward is from Total Security in Salina?
I think that was part of that, did you say they had to come and do something on the fire doors?
Fire doors.
Automatic shutting fire doors.
Are you talking about for Lincoln Park Manor?
I was, yeah.
It doesn't say that on here at all.
So annoyed on them that...
That's because that looks like that's a statement. You shouldn't have probably put that in your box because it's not an invoice. You probably already signed up on all the invoices.
(coughs)
Still isn't a good sentence there, I don't know what to do. It would have to say patronize our local dining establishments and stores. Because they don't really visit our dining establishments and stores.
Maybe patronize between also an hour.
Here you go. I think that would make it much more appropriate here.
Anyone want to read that it one more time?
Probably need a comma after to whom it may concern. Okay. Looks chromatically in shape. What is our current contract with K-Camp? They want us to sign this for three years? Is it yearly?
Well, we see that we...
They have us do it a couple of years and then they give us a discount the first year. And then your premium can only go up a maximum percentage in the years thereafter.
Kind of locks, locks us in to costs and it locks them into the fact that we'll be participating.
Okay, so they want to offer the first year contracted with them for insurance, a deduction of $11,650. And what is our total? With a maximum annual rate cap increase, I suppose that means, of 2.25% for the 2018 program year and a rate cap of two to five percent for the 2019 and 2020 program years. So they're basically just saying if you take this $11,650 deduction, which I'm sure is less than 2.25% what they're going to increase, that they're guaranteeing they won't make more than a 5% increase on your base price.
Depends on your loss ratio.
But this is saying they're guaranteeing...
Sometimes they come in and hand us a check at the end of the year. If our loss ratio is down.
Last year we paid 132,274. So what they're saying is regardless of what our loss ratio is, we won't have more than a maximum amount of, which if we had a high usage year, then they do, I don't know if it's five years or seven years, I can't remember what he said.
Which we have a lot of holding issues.
And that, the increase is on the premium and not after the discount. So whatever that premium would be minus the discount, we would still pay the increase on that premium amount. They're not going to give you the maximum increase on that reduced amount.
Now they factor cost ratio over a period of years.
And always factor in a 10% increase, knowing that it's going to be a little bit less, but that will account for when we add equipment. Because the newer equipment is based upon the replacement value. So if you're getting rid of an old piece of equipment and you have a new, it could go up quite a bit.
That number that you quoted me, 132,274, is that for 2017?
Yes. And we get $2,000 back through their grant program if we utilize it. Which the past two years we bought push bars for the cop cars.
So these are just letters from Cameron Johnson to verify the bid award. Did you read them?
They're letters.
Yeah, they sent to the bidding bidders. Maybe down at that, that's just, that's the contract or the thing we have to sign, send back.
And this is the rate program. When is the last time that Lincoln County solicited bids for insurance instead of just re-contracting with K-Camp?
I moved it to K-Camp ever since I've been on the board.
K-Camp has just been on by the counties. Lincoln County is on the counties. It's just a pool of, what, 70 counties, 60? Can't remember now.
Right, but the problem with that is that you're taking business from the private sector. You're reducing their ability to be competitive. I moved to solicit bids for a county insurance policy so that we at least have a comparison to K-Camp.
Do I have a second? Motion dies for a second.
Since you've been with K-Camp the entire time that you've been on the board, do you have any idea what other insurance companies are offering?
I do know that more counties continue to join K-Camp because of the cost of the insurance up in the private sector.
And you do realize that economically speaking, by counties partaking in a program like this, they're not contributing to the private sector competition by giving them their business.
But they also provide the attorney assist, they provide the training sessions. There's a lot more involved in K-Camp than just the insurance.
I understand there are benefits. I still think it would be prudent to solicit bids for anything. It's professional.
Do I have a motion, sign this?
Oh, maybe.
Great stabilization agreement with K-Camp.
I have a second.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. Is there any questions? Not all in favor, say hi. Hi, pose.
Nay.
Do you want me to assign this down? Yeah, I guess I do.
Yep.
Did you contact Elizabeth?
I did. She said she's still on the fence, doesn't really know. And so I asked her if maybe by November 15th she could let us know. And she said she would. And she also said that if she decides again, she'll maybe bring a couple of names for you guys to at least have some thoughts on. have some thoughts on.
So while we have some downtime, maybe we should look at our job descriptions, since we have to have that done by the end of the year. We could at least take one or two.
I think we need the Human Resources, Y'all, Mrs. Payroll Day, so why don't you schedule her in for next week, Y'all?
Okay. Which job descriptions would you like to?
I think we need to do the Highway Department, County Health Nurse, EMS. I think those are the three major departments that we have control over. Were we also supposed, weren't we going to work on the evaluation forms too? She brought those down and we were going to look over them and because I thought they were pretty bugglesome and time-consuming. So if she would done those with her as well. Think we need to simplify those a little bit so they're not-
So can either of you explain to me how the restitution fund works?
Do you what?
The restitution fund. Do you have a, I haven't, I'm not sure how that works. I'd appreciate an explanation.
We're talking about restitution, restitution fund? You just apply for reimbursement for as far as I know, that's how it's done. I've never done it.
And so where is that money held?
County Attorney, right?
In the-
In the Treasurer's Office.
Treasurer's Office, but it's under the County Attorney, right?
So is that fund called Crime Restitution Fund, or what is? I didn't see that in the budget preparations for this year.
We don't put money in it.
But I mean, is it not counted as a total holdings that is transferred to the next year's budget? Why is it not included?
It's not a budget, it's more like the way it's done, right?
It's a savings-
It's a fund out there that's- portion of fees they collect up there in the-
So the board decides on the applicants?
Yes.
So is there, is there another fund then where restitution is paid out?
What do you mean by restitution? Do you mean like if a person commits a crime and they're ordered through the court to pay restitution?
To pay a fine?
The district court takes care of that.
District Court has their own restitution fund?
District Court has their own funds.
Well, I mean, they have their own funds in addition to our county portion?
They have their own separate checking account. That money goes into-
Their state or whatever.
And so who distributes that money to?
The district court.
And how do they choose where that money?
I'm assuming it's court order.
You mean if someone, if someone damages property and then they're ordered to pay that person for their property?
They would pay it and then court would just merge it out to whoever it's supposed to go to.
So those are the only two ways that our court, our local county court system collects money and then disperses it? Either the board from the Crime Restitution Fund or the District Court automatically orders funds to someone based on the findings of their, of their court case?
I believe so.
If the judge orders restitution. The other one is for crimes where there is no no one arrested or no restitution-
There's no victim necessarily is what you're saying, that they have to pay a fine for their offense?
Like, for example, I got a check on my desk right now from the clerk of the District Court that says it's restitution for transport costs. I don't know what costs we paid and when we paid them, so I need to talk to the Sheriff's Office. But somebody was apparently transported at some point in time and as part of their agreement, they had to repay those costs. So they finally have gotten those costs. And like a, a person who's paying fines, I don't know if they set them up on payment schedules or if they have to have the money upfront. That's District Court, they take care of that.
Okay.
But, so the check that I have on my desk right now says from the clerk of the District Court.
Okay. So how does the Crime Restitution Board choose the, from the applicants? Do you have to be a nonprofit?
No, no, anybody. For instance, if somebody broke their windshield or something, then you could apply to them for, I'm just using that example, I don't know if a windshield is-
But we don't, we don't keep a record on our budget of how much money's in that account?
No, because it's not counting, it's not counting funds.
So who does the money belong to?
Good question. I'd have to go pull the statutes on that.
I mean, is, is it, where, you said it's held in the Treasurer's Office, though?
Yes, and it's listed in a fund above one hundred, so it's not subject to a bunch of- And there is a policy, so I will write that down. I will get some information on it.
I think it's like, isn't it a portion of diversion, payments and stuff like that?
I think maybe we should, after the closing of the health insurance enrollment, we should ask just to see the breakdown of numbers to see if anybody chose any of the alternative plans, so we know where we are with what we budgeted. I think that would be a good idea. So if not next week, 'cause that's pretty short notice, maybe the week after. Do we have all regular Monday meetings this month?
November, I don't know.
The only thing with November thirteenth is that we'll canvas first, so everything that will be on the agenda will be pushed back.
On the thirteenth?
Yeah.
Look, we'll also have to meet the thirtieth, won't we? Cause that's the twenty.
Yes.
It's the twenty-seventh or else we'll have to meet canceled, we'll meet on thirty. Cause we're off those Thursday and Friday that week.
The holidays, Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving?
I'm not reading the paper where DJ's was sold.
I heard last week that they were-
There was a different name on the building.
I don't know if that was like a immediate or-
There was a different name on the building, yes. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Alfa Wallace.
I'm Jessica Clay, Director of Lincoln.
Nice to meet you. Hi, Terry.
So I guess to kind of tell you why we're here, to recap as to why we're here. Currently, the rec sits inside the general fund for the city. And that is the way that our charter ordinance is written. This year, or two thousand eighteen, we'll be moving into our own fund. So we'll no longer have the safety net of the general fund in the city. But at the same time, I think this is also a great step for the rec because we're kind of moving on and saying we want to stand alone and we want to be able to-
financially function alone.
We want to be able to build our funds and move forward so that maybe we can become a little bigger.
You'll do that through fundraising and donations?
Donations, fundraising, registration fees is probably our biggest form of revenue. It makes up more than a third of our budget.
Are you doing a five oh one C three or are you still-
Nope, we're still gonna be the city. We're just going to operate with it.
So we're just the county where you have, you have the general and the highway department has their own and the ambulance and the health department. We're just gonna be our own fund outside their general fund, much likely function.
And it's still budgeted the same way? Actually, it's budgeted a little differently. But as far as the budget authority goes, it functions exactly the same way. Right now, you know, we overspend our budget, we have a deficit of any sort because we're inside the general fund. The general fund covers that, obviously, being inside of our own fund. We don't have that, which is part of why we're here. Currently, the county gives us twenty-five thousand dollars a year. And right now, I believe they're doing that through reimbursement. So you basically get a copy of all of our bills for that quarter. It's split up, however it's split up, and then the county reimburses us. When the rec commission started initially, for the first two years, I believe that was done differently. And so at the end of January, you guys wrote us a check and it was something like sixty percent of the twenty-five thousand dollars. And then in May, we got another check, and we would like to go back to that. And the reason for that is January first, when our new fund starts or when the new budget starts, we actually are starting with a zero balance. January ninth, after city council meeting, they'll make a motion to give us our twenty-five thousand dollars until as of January ninth, we'll have twenty-five thousand dollars. But then that's it. And so it basically functioned off of zero money until basketball starts and get the registration fees for basketball. And that's basically the way it's going to be every single year. It's until, we won't always start with a zero balance, cause at the end of two thousand eighteen, we have some money left over. But this year it's a little tough.
So you're just asking us to distribute it as we do the other entities that we distribute tax money to?
The intention is still at the end of each quarter that the city clerk, that they'll, either, either Jessica or the city clerk will do as they always have and send you a report of all of the expenses and expenditures for the quarter. So that all of that would remain the same, so you'd still have that to do if you wanted that.
How often was the rec overspending their budget and pulling funds from the general fund of the city?
I think it's happened once or twice.
More, I think-
And it was-
I, I remember when Rose was city clerk, she said that it was a year that we overspent, but she said we had taken in so much more revenue than had been anticipated, they felt it was okay. Because our revenue, we estimated our revenue and we over-
We brought in more money, but-
We didn't have a budget authority to spend it, even though we received it. So she said it kinda-
So this remedies that problem that you're talking about, the authority to spend that money regardless of-
No, you still don't have, it's still like your budget here. I'm assuming that you guys have the same statutes that you have. Like your budget authority is your budget authority. So this year, my budget authority is eighty thousand dollars. Even if I bring in ninety-six thousand dollars, I can still only spend eighty thousand dollars.
But it's gonna roll over, so then why wouldn't-
They're gonna have a capital outlay fund or something for the other excess.
And we already have that. We've set that, we started that last year.
Yes.
Then why wouldn't you just consider going nonprofit?
Cause we still function under the city. We are still part of the city and our-
But I think what's the benefit of that?
Probably insurance and stuff like that's probably the biggest benefit.
So are you contributing to the city's insurance? Are you paying a fee toward the insurance coverage?
She is, she is considered a city employee like all other city employees.
No, I'm talking about liability insurance for the rec, you're paying the city.
And that's all split out on the portion of the building we use, basically, and our equipment.
And the city is covering your insurance outside of the fund for the rec commission?
No, the rec commission fund, fund covers my insurance.
It's reimbursing the city?
Well, I don't know that we have any problems. Do we don't? Do we need any?
Maybe just a motion to return it back because I'm almost positive that we did it by a motion to reimburse after the first couple of years because-
Well, we ran into problems because we were funding it more.
Yes.
I mean, we were- The excess funds weren't bearing down. Excess funds of our, excess funds are being returned, so we, that's why we changed our method of distributing distributions.
Well, I think we need to consider the fact that if we're going to be funding it so that they can build up a capital outlay fund.
You're not funding us so that we can build up a capital outlay. There are years when, this year, we're gonna be pretty close to our estimated budget. Registration's down a little bit and it ebbs and flows every year as I started looking back through our records. That's all dependent on class sizes and just kids in general and parents and all of the other things that go on.
You said a third of your fee, your third of your budget is covered by fees, so the other two thirds through the city and the-
County.
The county, which is a match twenty-five to twenty-five.
Twenty-five to twenty-five, right. There are years, last year, we had excess money in our budget. Part of that is there was no rector enter for the first quarter of the year. So there was a lot less expenditure, expenditures. We got to the end of the year and I said, I don't wanna spend that money. We don't need anything at this point. Everything that we needed, we purchased. And so we had moved into a capital outlay. This year, I don't think we're gonna have a whole lot of extra money at the end of the year. So it's not like we're just building money and building money and building money and building money. We are surviving though, and we are staying within our budget on an annual basis, which I think is very important.
Capital outlay would be used for equipment and stuff like that.
Yeah, we're, and we're looking into a new registration program that's a little costly. I mean, in the grand scheme of things, it's not that expensive, but when you function on an eighty thousand dollar budget every year, it's it's about eight thousand dollars to start it and then forty nine hundred dollars a year to keep it.
A program, a computer program?
No, it's like Civic Ready, like what David, they'll use this for emergency management. It's Civic Plus and they have a Civic Rec program. So you can do all your registration online. You can manage-
Post your meds, post your activities.
You can text everybody at once and say basketball's canceled today due to smell. You can email everybody.
Can we not combine efforts with what we already pay for the emergency management service?
It's a different set of programs. So he uses Civic Ready and we use, are gonna use Civic Rec. And it's all part of the Civic Plus program. So yes, if we said the city wants to use Civic Plus, the county wants to use Civic Plus, then we could pay for it together and then split everything off. But I don't think that's what it's set up. David pays for his Civic Ready and we would pay for Civic Rec.
Maybe we should consider how that can be consolidated.
Yeah, we would definitely, I think, be open to any of that, for sure.
So we're gonna make things easier for, for the rec and especially for parents. More parents are into technology and would rather just go online and register their kid and take all the activities and pay once or as they go.
Yeah.
We'd still have the old-fashioned pay-per-forms for parents that prefer to do that and whatnot.
But it's true, might be something a lot more.
We have a discussion with David.
I can have that discussion with David.
Yeah, I mean, you may be able to utilize what he already has set up and just reimburse him a portion, which would save you out of your budget purchasing a separate program.
Isn't the city paying to that or?
The city does pay for that, because we discussed that. And when I was talking to the sales rep, he said it's a different program, but if you set it up differently or you enroll differently, I guess, then you get Civic Plus as opposed to everybody in Civic Rec and Civic. They have like six different portions.
So is there a reimbursement line item in emergency management from the city? To pay, to pay into that program?
David bills them out and then he pays the gross amount and then all of the other organizations send it back and then we put it in as a reimbursement.
As a reimbursement in his fund? I think with such a small population, it would be smart to just try to use one program together and then everybody gets the, whether you have kids or not, you get the notification, but you know, whether you're out of town or not, you get the storm watch notification. So it's the same concept.
It's going to just be for parents, you know, um, yeah, grandparents can sign in and then they get notifications like they do now about the school and the, the rec activities and different things like that.
And we can email everybody saying, you know, remember in fifteen days, registrations are due. That's a big thing. We posted on Facebook, we posted on our website. We send them out through the school, but there's families that don't get all of that information and they still want to register their kids. I think, I, I try to build an email database, but it's really hard and this way it makes it a lot easier.
Does school use, what's A B? What did A B say?
We have, I think we use part of it. But we still have the old messaging system that we used to have, um, because it kind of comes with Power School. I think they still have the Power School one. But I believe we participated in it as, in it as well.
You participate in, the school pays into the emergency management one as well?
We did last year. I'm not sure if they still are this year. I'd have to look, but we had been participating.
I thought you discussed it with them as well.
He did.
The cities. I guess going back to the budget issue, I, I am glad to see this. I think there's been some, some questions raised at the county level here, but we wondered in one fund and sending the money into the general fund was not a good idea. We realized shortly after we started.
Well, I think when this started, I don't think they expected it to grow as much as it did. So the way that they set it up initially seemed like the, the logical way and the way to do it. But as things have changed and years have gone by and things have grown.
And the person that launched this did not live to see its tradition.
Right. I think he had a very
Think he had a, a vision.
A vision, yes, exactly.
Unfortunately, just like Abraham Lincoln died with his vision, so did Dale. So yeah, well, I commend you on your work.
Thank you.
I think it's good for the kids. It's important that we provide some activities to give to the kids.
And we're working on some adult programs.
There's some adult activities and programs as well, which is good too, so.
Definitely working on that. Like I said, you know, we want to try to extend as much as we can and it's hard to do that anyway. But I think moving into our home, home fund gives us a little bit more wiggle room.
Yeah, a little more maybe decision making.
It does.
Thank you, girls.
Thank you. Thanks, appreciate it.
You have a motion to return to the twice yearly, I admit, we return to the twice yearly payment to the rec commission.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. Um, Don, is that based on a percentage of what we collect? Is that the way that, that is done?
Yes, so it's not always the
Sixty, forty.
And I guess Lincoln County is, you know, we don't, there's no other outside taxing entities in other counties that contribute to this. But I'm right. It's not based on school districts or anything. Okay.
Can we ask for maybe an update on what you guys decide for collaborating with the emergency management system? Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
I want to talk with David and Thank you.
Thanks.
Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion is carried.
Morning Bob.
Morning gentlemen.
Good morning.
Hi, Chris. What's that place, uh? Diesel place out there called?
B C.
B C?
B C.
Well, good morning Bob.
How are you? Is Neil Michael today?
Yeah, he called in. I just got over here. One of the six or seven, he calls and I don't be there and he's didn't sound good at all. Been sick as a dog all night. I guess he's joining in the crowd. Lance called. He was down too and Bobby didn't make it back. He'd been down last two days of last week with it.
Something you pass him around down there, huh?
Yeah, so I hope they keep it away from me. I don't
Yeah. I don't want it either, you know. Too bad.
I guess it's time of year when that starts going around.
Yeah. Maybe Madonna's foot shot wasn't as effective, as we hope.
Get mine here. Back to doctor, I think next week it is. I'll get mine then. He always makes me a whole lot until later before I get mine, he says.
Man, what do you got for us today, Bob?
Uh, don't have a whole lot. Like I say, it's been dens and graveling over there about, you know, finished up here this morning. Working on some pipe and they're working on that bridge up there on Twentieth there, road there. Seaver in there, four seventy, bridge. Trying to get it, see if we can get, been pumping water out of it, trying to get a guy out and a silt out of it so we can start forming up and stuff and run some footing and walls and stuff on it where it's all falling out. Had worked on a couple of other pipe haulers, kind of pumping the water and stuff on it, getting it ready. You know, the marge this morning, putting across the cobrid ends is all plugged up and stuff. So we can finish grabbing that. And move down this way, try to do some grabbing out here for dealing with Molly a little bit out there, some spots they've got. And that, I don't have a whole lot of other stuff. Keep things a going. Around like I said. Old back hose can, went down on us. So we're kind of stuck. We're kept running around down here and we got to do something with it because we got the other one up there working on the bridge. So we're kind of have to get it when we can.
Major?
Well, they were moving it one day. Just going down the road and said all of a sudden, just like you dropped the anger, said about three of them, and she said it's something, the transmission locked up or something that it'll go in low gear. He can run in low gear, but then he asks you to put it in, it won't move. It's just like it's locked. So I don't know where we're going. Try to figure out what we're going to need to do with it or like I've been chasing that back and forth. Got too much money in it. Well, then is it worth dealing with? It's almost twenty-five years old. So are we better look for something different or guess where we're going to be? Guess we need to try to get somebody that can figure out exactly what's going on with it. Lance and I have come and looked at it and tried to figure out. It said before, we hadn't come up with an answer. It was we think we might know, but we should not possibly without tearing into it. And that's a major project.
Yeah. The harvest has really beat the roads around the east part of the county. The dry weather and wind.
The harvest is really hard. I never really get worse with weather. Being out terrible.
Deteriorated some of them, you know. I think the harvest is wrapping up over in that area. It seems to be. It's freezing pretty long.
Most of it's pretty well getting down around. Yeah, keep taking, I hope we get a little moisture or some kind of air. Guys going to get through planting and harvesting and stuff.
Yeah, if we can get a, not a big rain, but a, a good rain, so they can grade those roads and get them packed back down for winter.
Try to get it settled in there for it good, the snow or something. Hope we don't run into a lot of that, but there we know.
Sort of moisture will tear them up pretty bad.
Yeah, um, Michael said there Friday evening, he got word from K D O that they called him and said it, it was a verbal approval on the signing project that says Monday, everybody will get their signatures on the papers and stuff and try to get them to you. Just tell them verbal, you can start going and signs if you want to now, so.
Who, who mapped out the eight hundred some odd locations that they resigned?
Kirkham and Michael's.
Kirkham and Michael?
Yeah, they did the engineering on that.
So is that?
That's a grant they had to do engineering.
Yeah, grant call for them to do, say, what they didn't, what we didn't need. It was already there.
So do they give us a financial report to show the cost of those locations so that we know what portion, how, what portion of the grant went to sign material versus labor or?
Yeah, not that I know of because there's nothing through the county, no cost to us, so.
You haven't seen any paperwork on it, you mean?
So I didn't see anything, so.
A little bit.
I don't know what the bid was on it and stuff for the signing company. Like I say, state federal took care of all that. So it wasn't any cost to us. They just had to bid on it.
They worked, they did the engineering and then they put it up for bids, didn't they?
Yeah.
But what I'm asking is how do we know which signs were covered? You know, how do we know that any of the nine one one signs weren't covered or?
They weren't covered. They weren't
None of the nine one one signs are covered.
Just the federal requirements I
Right. And what about like some of the missed bridges and things like that? I mean, who did we contact about that? That'd be Kirkham and Michael?
That was what the inspection was.
Yeah, I'd say they went to their inspection year, Michael here, K D O did and stuff, you know, we did those. Whatever was missing, I should have caught and for that they were picking everything. So it was there, so. I know I talked to them a time or two that there's a place or two that I know they missed and there's a place or two they went back and, and caught some of them. But still I know there's some others around, but.
Well, I mean, I don't think it was the company missing them. They were following the instructions. It would have been
What was on the plan.
Right, the plans wouldn't have shown all the proper locations. So that was done by Kirkham and Right, the plans wouldn't have shown all the proper locations, so that was done by Kirkham and Michael.
Yeah, but like I say, it's hard, you drive down the road, grass and weeds are out there, some of these, you can't hardly tell if it's a culvert or anything there if you don't really know the territory. And some of them, I've talked to inspector about different ones that I've run across. But I've measured them too and they're, width is wide enough that they say we don't need a sign at that location, so even though.
What is that?
Should have, they say the road width and stuff is.
What is the width that they say?
Uh, I think it's, I don't know what they're using, sure, somewhere between twenty-four, twenty-eight foot, I think it has to be over twenty-four foot wide.
Over twenty-four feet?
But like I say, we're gonna turn right around and go back and start changing all of them, redoing, wasn't much use. All in about putting something there and then take it out and turn around, put something right back, we just will do it one time and have it over with.
So the bridge reflectors can come down?
He said verbally, and I'll tell you, it's all clear, you can do whatever you need to do with it now. Let's see if they'll get everything signed and sent to you Monday, you know. So we can start figuring a plan on how we start getting them down, what we're gonna do with each one of them, so.
Did you finish the project you did on two-twentieth and Oak?
On which one, two-twentieth and Oak?
Yeah.
What about?
Is that done, that project?
Yeah, it was done.
Do you have a, do you have a log of the materials or how much time or loads were hauled?
Yeah, we always have that, Liz doing it here, end of the month stuff, she has to go through, she got all the tickets there, the guys turned in for hauling the hours off the machines and trucks. Say she's gotta get that all running through the system before we come up any kind of total. It shouldn't be that much, we didn't haul, yeah, it looks like probably hauled well, but we could fit a skin coat over those black spots they were complaining about on there, got a little saddle riding up through there. Wasn't all that much gravel, really hauled on there.
Were there a lot of loads hauled on the thirtieth? I saw that, I drove on that the other day and I saw there was new, some gravel down.
Yeah. We're out on.
Thirtieth at the south end towards.
What you've called, we're sitting about there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't know if I can get there again, like I say, I haven't seen the ticket, but.
Where did that come from?
A little more than I thought they were gonna do, it's red.
Where did that gravel come from?
Uh, Wolf Creek or Mike, or whatever you wanna call it.
So we are hauling from there again?
Yeah, that's about the only thing we have up in that area right now. We haul a little out box there, had a little pile out there and haul some down out of Vesper there and cleaned it up, so.
Have you put that concrete, the crushed concrete anywhere besides Jaguar and over there on Colts, or those the only two spots?
Oh, yeah, we put some over there, and I'd say on Jaguar. Uh, I can't think of any place else right now offhand, we did.
Do you have any ideas where you might like to see some be used?
Oh, there may be a spot or two, we'll end up putting some here. And there's one place where they haul a load or two out here on, call them Bear Canyon Hill over there, it's kind of soft spot up there and I know they go up in there with cattle and stuff, so that's about the only thing they deal for. Might put a load or two in there. Better than that, I don't really know of any of the places right now.
Do the greater operators give you a report when they um, like pull the ditches? Do they tell, is that just something they keep track of or do they turn that into you and say?
Yeah, they are, say they're gonna trim the shoulders or something, but if they do more and just trim the shoulders, they have to let me know because I have to put one call in for all that, so.
Okay.
That's something that Larry called me here the other day, said you'd call him or something about pot spot or something on the Vesper Road out there or something.
Mm-hmm, I had two farmers said they were hauling out of the fields and that it's just built up. They told me it's just shy of two miles south of the stop sign where the blacktop ends, so I went down through there. It's kinda, it looks to me like it's into a gate, it's not necessarily someone's driveway, but it's just built up where it's hardened from driving in and out right there, and so when you, it kind of needs shaven down a little bit, more probably than what the greater itself can do.
And Larry called me after you talked to him, said he was totally confused, he doesn't know exactly what you was talking about or where or something. I went up to you there, because we had a bridge up, yonder had a couple broken planks in it. If you look at it, so I'll do it through there, because I didn't really know what I was looking for, because he wasn't sure what.
Did he tell you one point seven miles south of the stop sign?
He said it was, and that two mile stretch somewhere in between iron and Vesper there, but he didn't know exactly.
It's on the east side of the road.
Exactly.
It's an entrance, right?
Yes.
It's not in the road, it's an entrance.
Well, I mean, the entrance to the road, it kind of has it humped up, if you were just driving on your side of the road and you weren't in the middle because you were passing, you'd definitely have, in a top heavy load, you'd have a problem if you were going just a little too fast, which is a little dangerous.
Yeah, that's kind of, I've been there, several places in there that over the years have developed, they haven't cut down there so it wouldn't have a place and the blade kind of lifts over and then those places have been there for I don't know how long, but of course they keep going a little bit, but yeah.
So what, what did you tell them to do to it?
Well, I'd say I didn't notice, because that's something. If you find something like that, you need to call the office and let us know, because like he was confused, he didn't know what she was wanting, so hard for him to relay to me, so when you get.
But then when you found out.
From somebody or they have a complaint, they need to call the office, so we got a record of what it is, where it is and all that, so I can go see exactly what we need to do.
Okay, that's what that program's for, is it up and running?
Yeah, I think Michael's still having trouble, the next tech was messing you up or something, I don't.
Yeah, that'll take care, that'll take care of all of that right away, because you can just log it in and pinpoint it on the map and say it's exactly right here. But then you went out there and you still didn't see it?
Well, I didn't see anything that's been any different than it has for us, uh, two, three years, like I said, it's pretty much all the same as it's always been.
You've never had any calls about that before?
No.
Two and a half miles south of the stop sign.
On Vesper Road, one-twentieth?
The highway stop sign?
Mm-hmm, mm, no, the where the blacktop ends.
I broke down one point seven miles.
That's what I was given on the phone.
So it's typically here, you're hiding there somewhere, between there and iron, is it, oh, they all just guessing in that direction.
Well, there are several spots right there where the roads kind of shape, it's being shapen according to where people are exiting to get into their fields, but the worry was that that ups, it's on the high side of the road anyhow, and to get into that gate where I saw, it definitely, it wouldn't be a problem if you were traveling in the middle of the road, but if you were moving over to pass someone with a top heavy load.
Most of the people should know it's there because it's been there for, I'd say, a long time, so. Like I say, it's not gonna do as much good right now as I was, just to try to do anything with it, we'll just create a bigger problem with it right now until we get a little moisture where we can shave something off and fill it in or whatever. But I'll go back by there and take a look at it again. Like I say, we should, you and people who ever's called me in with a complaint, we call the office, so we got a record of it and know exactly what we're looking for. Like Larry called me and he was lost with it and so I can't go out there really unless there's something drastic to find. Because I was looking for a soft spot in the middle of the road or on shoulder of the road or something.
He told you it was a sparse spot?
Sand, sand spot or something that'll break out sometimes, so that's what I was looking for. Yes. Guys out there doing stuff and they get bothered and then they're confused and don't know what to do and.
Yeah, it's better to follow the chain of command a little bit.
Yeah.
Inform them. That's usually what I tell people when they call me, have you called the highway department?
Yeah.
Those information is usually not quite as accurate as first hand.
Was everyone here in this room present when we've had about three or four different people come in, in person and say that they've given verbal complaints and called in on multiple occasions with no avail, does, does anyone remember that or am I the only one?
Well, that's the reason, like I say, they need to call up there, because we've got a record of it, Liz writes it all down when they call unless they call up there. Most of that, yeah. Not all of it, we're gonna run right out there that afternoon and fix unless we're working in that area or something. Some of them have to be put off, but I usually get back with them if they call up there and let me know if something going on, if they got a problem of some kind. Without calling up there, I don't know it. Yes, if I could deal out here into Twentieth, you give me a letter that somebody's wrote you here, I'll go out there to say, yeah, I need to go out there. So after that, well, I'd talk with Mr. Jeffers, he'd been in and we talked about doing another, as soon as we were able around the area, I fixed it, wrote it for him, so.
Anything else for Bob? Thanks Bob.
Okay.
Good day.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, stay away from that stuff Bob.
I'm trying to.
Run fast.
We're gonna drag the dog.
Run fast, run, don't bring it in here, don't bring it in here, I don't want it.
I don't want it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Yeah. Okay, counts payable, counts receivable, or counts receivable, I wish it was, payroll, payables and payroll. Questions, let's do payroll first. Any questions on payroll?
I don't have any questions.
Did, um, do we have some people out at the sheriff's department? Do we have vacations or something?
I don't know.
You don't know, I just wondered, I just noticed that the overtime on a couple of them wasn't as great as.
They've been pretty much the other normal, so.
Did they fill both positions?
No.
Either, not, neither?
Not, not that I remember.
I mean, I don't remember signing or, you know, approving anyone, but.
They actually weren't representing until first year. They could draw and I got it from someplace else, but.
So if I'm understanding this right, if, if an employee takes a vacation day during the week, but still worked overtime, we're paying the overtime rate for those additional hours? In that same?
No, you only pay the overtime if they actually physically worked forty hours.
Okay.
So if, let's say they worked forty-five hours and eight hours of it was vacation, then they would not get overtime.
Okay.
They would get extra regular hours, but they have to physically work the forty hours.
Okay.
I'd move to approve payroll.
Give me a second.
I'll say.
Move in second.
Don't you need an amount?
Payroll.
One hundred eighty thousand dollars, eighty-eight, I'm sorry, excuse me, one hundred and eighty thousand eighty-eight dollars ninety-three cents.
Um, Perry's side?
Aye.
Counts payable. I assume we have the postage machine in service?
No.
No.
Is it here?
Got time to mail out taxes, so, is it gonna make it?
Getting close, it's supposed to. We had to do the postage, we'll have to pay postage a little differently, so once they get the postage, then I'm assuming they're bringing equipment and installing.
I think they're. Sent some out.
So I think in your payables, there's like two vendors, one will be the postage that we'll have to prepay and then.
Yeah, I saw where we paid the company, but maybe I didn't.
Yeah, it's in there, they've influenced us.
It's been ordered and in the works, so.
As far as I know. We're on it.
That, um, we paid the law office or somebody, but it doesn't say, they did turn it work and they also did work for the district court.
The law office.
Office of, it just says law office of.
Scott D Wright, LLC.
Scott D Wright.
It doesn't all fit in the first vendor on name.
What is this sixty-five dollar toothpaste?
Do what?
Sixty-five dollars for toothpaste?
It's the vendor, it's probably for sheriff, prisoner supplies.
Probably a lot more.
Bob Barker Company?
Yeah, it's prisoner supplies.
There's probably more on there than just toothpaste, but. I would guess it, yeah.
I think they service the meds normally too. But no, it is a case of toothpaste.
I guess you got seven of them in there or eight?
Can we, can we not have a policy that we purchase items locally? I mean, if we're gonna be spending that kind of money, I believe that it'd be beneficial to recirculate our money within our own economy.
I don't, I think they do a lot, a lot of their stuff they buy locally. They buy a lot of stuff from Lincoln Grocery.
It's probably a conversation you need to have with the sheriff because he probably has certain regulations for prisoners that they have to follow.
Yeah, I would guess. I don't know whether individual or not.
Yeah.
That could be, I mean, you know, this is how much you get, this is it. Lay that problem down, juvenile detention center. Why aren't toothbrushes down? Weapons?
Yeah.
How is it? Something up? Imagine the amount of evil in the mind of a person or something, it's inviolating or something.
What is CMRSPOC?
What's that?
And then it says general fund, postage.
What's the vendor name? I think that is the vendor that we will pay postage where we used to pay Pitney Bowes, postage by phone. Now, because the postage machine is through a different company.
And what is EDS again? EDS Kansas Premium Payments, EDS.
That's our health insurance.
Oh.
Yes, it's supposed to pay CRMSPOC. That's the postage. Is that like seventy thousand or?
Yeah, and then the other portion is the employee, portion is the employee payment, correct? The withholdings that we withhold and then pay and kind of.
Yeah, I'm assuming it's showing, can I move each department?
Yes, mhm. This presenter clicker, is that something that we purchased for the October eleventh meeting?
Um, yes, we did and the health department is going to utilize it and so is, um, emergency management, actually anybody in the department can use it.
And that toxicology doesn't come out of the highway department? Says it's coming out of the general fund.
Toxicology.
To frontier forensics.
Uh, that is.
That's an autopsy.
Autopsy.
Oh. Why such a small portion paid?
What do you mean?
It's thirty-five dollars.
That's just part of the bill. I think we have quite a few of, well, frontier.
I mean, doesn't, why, well, I mean, I guess I'm asking why it comes out of the general fund? Did that have something to do with the sheriff's office or?
No, anytime there's an unattended death, the county is required to pay for an autopsy on the person that was.
Unattended at the time. But who pays the other portion, the insurance company?
No, Lincoln does, Lincoln County does, it's just a matter, and I know that we were billed for it, so it just depends on what vendor it is.
Oh, that's just the toxicology's portion of the total bill, got, okay, gotcha.
Oh, I was thinking, last month we had a frontier.
I, I, we either had it last month or it was this month, but the two names that was on there, I didn't recognize. So I remember asking, handed it color to the sheriff's office and make sure they were our people.
We had two that weren't clinic this month.
Okay, then I think we paid last month for the frontier. And if we haven't billed, we will be billing, we'll, we'll be receiving the final bill eventually. I can look it up though. No, we haven't been billed yet for the two that we're paying Dr. Warren for.
Mhm.
So it'll be another fifteen hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, what they're, fifteen hundred now?
And then we have to pay mileage to take them down.
Expansion.
A lot of times the mortuary will take care of that.
See, they had one in Mount Hope this week, we, in Sedgwick County. Unattended, sound like me as a young man, I don't know, give you any details. I also, um, did not know that if you donate your body to, um, university, you know, for, um, that they would, could reject it, that they would reject it.
Really?
That happened to a guy that's, well, his wife is from Barnum down in Texas and he was a professor there at the university in the medical, biological part and he had, he was a pretty good sized guy, but I don't think he probably was now. He had, he'd had Alzheimer's and had health problems for years. And he donated his body to the university and two days later, they called her and asked her what they want, what she should do with it, what they should do with it because they didn't want it. It's kind of a, kind of really upset her, I mean, you know, you just kinda, of course, I mean, they were gonna cremate it after they had done it. You know, and if, and being a professor, a research professor there at the university, you would've thought that they would've maybe wanted to look at some things. When they first told me, I said, ah, it can't be true, but it was. I figured they probably needed him bad if they don't take that anything.
Who is Ready Environmental?
That's the company that took over DJF.
Are they local?
No, I don't know, I have no idea who they are.
Well, they're going to be.
They're local, I guess, yeah, they're local, they're located out here, but I'm not sure who the, who's the owner, who the individual or it's our, or it's a corporation or not, that's just what I'd heard, I don't know for sure whether that's true. Terry said the name of the building changed, so. I don't know how often I clean those, do you remember Dawn? Your contract, was that monthly or are we paying quarterly?
I don't remember.
I know it was expensive.
For what?
Cleaning those toilets, porta potties that we had to put out for those outline shops.
Oh, that, okay, if who, is that the company, it changed names, the company changed names since we got?
Apparently, that's probably.
DJ Environmental.
I had heard they had been sold, but I didn't, I didn't know that.
Somebody was telling our office that the, because they're in the industrial park that the city owns, that there's some kind of notice that they were supposed to give on them, so they haven't given that notice yet.
That's where I, that's, somebody raised a question about that too, and I said, that's a city, I don't know anything about that.
Here's one that says coroner examination for a hundred dollars.
Is that Warner, is that Warner?
Yeah, what, Warren?
Warren, yeah, that's the.
Guy that coroner, right?
Yeah, from, contract coroner from.
Washington, he's a district coroner.
Washington County, I think, he's actually a district coroner.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
I move to omit the contract payment, the contract payment to a hair law LLC from accounts payable. To avoid. Knowingly distributing money under potential violation of law.
Do I have a second? Motion dies for a life of second. I would move to pay, pay, uh, accounts payable for three hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-six cents. Do I have a second?
Oh, sir.
Move and second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye, pose.
Aye.
Motion is carried, accounts payable are paid. Okay. Alexis, do you wanna, or do you wanna take a break, either one before John comes?
Um, we had some discussion about doing research and, you know, you had said that you don't feel the need to do any research, which is fine. But, you know, I still have a lot of other.
Why?
You both had said that you didn't feel the need that you had to do any research here.
Research for what?
Any kind of documents or, you know, historical records of anything that's been happening besides what is put in front of you on paper.
When there is a need, I will, if there isn't a need, I won't.
Right, so.
First of all, I've gotta see a need.
Well, the need is that I've been told repeatedly by the clerk's office that they don't have time to do things and that they've been amassing amounts of hours trying to do research for things that I've requested through Cora. And the perfect example is that the website has yet to see any maps for voting and we have a, an election coming up. And I, you know, I was told and you said that you were fine with that they didn't have time to do this. So, being that the county clerk's office doesn't have enough time to do the research, I think it's pertinent that we be able to do our own. And I don't see any reason why, since we are placed in charge of all county property, which includes everything in this building, all the materials, everything that the county owns, you know, that's our responsibility as commissioners. We're, we're charged with maintaining and preserving county property, so there's no reason that we shouldn't be able to utilize it as such. Um, a point of clarification is that I have no desire to access any records that are being kept on, you know, medical, for medical information, which brings me to another point. I was told, Dawn, by you, that you believe that there's suspicion that there's been a hacking of the system and that I knew something about it. You said that a few weeks ago, maybe you should report that to the commission.
What would you like me to report? We had Nextep come in and view our systems and they will be coming back with some recommendations to tighten our systems down, to replace computers and, um, it will be my intention to replace all of the computers in my office.
Okay, so that being said, then we'll have some extra computers to work with and I would like to see one available.
No, because they, our computers are old and they're open to be fallible, so those computers will be destroyed.
Well, we can have them wiped, we can have the hard drives wiped, replaced.
They will be destroyed because they will not be accessing, they don't want, they're suggesting that anything that is, um, Windows XP be done away with. And.
Regardless, you can, you can re-upload the whole system, you can get a whole brand new hard drive. The computer itself is just a shell of, of glass and plastic, but basically what I'm saying is, I think it would behoove us to be able to have our own research tools and I would like to see us have a computer. I can't get, I've, I've brought my laptop in here, I can't get internet service in this room to even look up anything. Or, you know, to, for example, to show you the email last week, I, I can't access it from in here without being into the system or using a computer that the commission has. And I think it, it would behoove us to have a research tool such as that. So, um, my motion is for us to be able to use it as we see fit as individual commissioners, to do our own research here and have access here. So I move to allow commissioners access to read-only documents and supply a computer for research to reduce the clerk's office secretarial duties to the commission.
Do I have a second? Motion dies for a life of second.
So why is it that you don't want internet access in this room or access to read-only documents? So that we can do our own research or be able to instantly draw up materials? What would be the reason for that?
I guess my feeling is that the clerk is the keeper of the records and it is her duty to supply open records requests. And those research would be researching open records and she's in charge of the records.
So then you don't care that she doesn't have time to perform her duties because she's so busy doing all of these open records?
I guess I would say to you, if she has become so busy at that office with that kind of stuff, that she will probably be asking for another clerical position in that office. And we, as county commissioners, will probably have to supply that.
So you would rather supply?
No, I would not, but I am saying that we are elected officials. Dawn and the treasurer and the register of deeds and the county attorney, the sheriff and the county commissioners are equals.
Okay, well, what does that have to do with the conversation?
That equals, that means that I can't order Dawn to do anything, but I have to supply the necessary materials for Dawn to do her job. Now, I have control of the purse, but saying that, if I do not appropriate enough money for Dawn to do her job, she has a complaint against the commission and she can take it upon herself to spend that money and we will pay it.
Do you realize that the district court provides a computer for public access to read-only documents?
Those are court records, right?
They're public records.
Court records.
They're public records, yes, so the, the district court. They're public records, yes. So the, the district court, with the tiny budget that it has out of our funds, supplies public access with a computer so that anybody can come in here and research.
And go in their office and do it, right?
What I'm saying, what I'm suggesting is that we have a computer because there are.
I think aren't those records available from home, basically, to go through the state?
I don't know. That's not my department.
It doesn't matter. There are other counties, many other counties, just touching our borders that provide all sorts of things online. They provide all of their, um, updated resolutions, for example. They have many, many years worth of minutes that you can research, not just the last two or three years that mysteriously are changed and disappeared, you know, at, on a whim. You, there are all kinds of ways to provide information to the public so that you don't have to do, as you said, and try to provide even more staff and increase the expense to the taxpayer to run this building. What you're basically saying is you're not willing to make a less, a lesser expensive choice to provide access to documents. You would wait until the clerk's office is gonna say that they need an additional employee.
Are available on the web. As you put them on, right?
No.
Older minutes are only available in the written form because it is not, well, you could look at microfilm, but our microfilm is in the salt mines, but, um.
From what year is that? From what year is that?
Microfilm?
Yeah, what you're talking about. What year?
What, what year?
What year, what year are you talking about is only stored on microfilm?
I'm not saying what year is, I, I'm, this is what I'm saying. I'm gonna clarify myself. The Kansas State Historical Society does not view electronic records as a permanent record. So therefore, we still microfilm documents. As books fill up, we have to pay to have them microfilmed. When we microfilm them, then we send them to the salt mines in case there's a natural disaster within our communities. Everything else is on books. So all of the commissioners' journals are only available by paper.
So every year that you've taken the time to put them in electronically, instead of just letting them be stored so that they can be accessed for years in, in the past on the website, you've manually removed them. That's what I'm saying. Other counties have years, ten years plus.
Well, we've only had computers in our office, probably, I don't know, you could look back in the commissioners' journals and tell when we hand typed the minutes.
The most recent available minutes are from two thousand and fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen.
If you would like us to put more minutes on, we can put more minutes on. Some of them are probably hidden. But earlier than that, um, probably from the time that we got the website is probably what we have minutes available. And then we hide them because everybody complains that our site is too cluttered and they can't see it. They can't find our information. I don't know how to make that better.
There are many other counties that have everything on their websites, all the years of minutes, all the resolutions that have been passed by the commission. All those things are public document. There's no need to have our clerk's office spend extra time and you potentially supply her an additional employee. That's just, that's a waste of money.
I don't, I don't have anything except for when we got computers. Everything else handwritten minutes. Um, all of the minutes from beginning of time are in the, the commissioners' journals. So if you want to approve, I can find a contractor to come in and scan and we can start adding those to the website. We can do that. But it's gonna cost us money.
Well, it would cost us much less than adding an employee as he's suggesting. Much, much less. Because it's a one-time expense. An additional employee is a future expense and for you to even suggest that is just.
I don't think he was suggesting it.
It was definitely said, suggesting the other.
He said that he could, because that became that big of a problem, he could see her asking for others. He wasn't suggesting.
Okay, well, end this. John is here. John, thank you. Good coming this morning.
Good morning.
So, um, if we could have just a few minutes of executive session, I'd just like.
We need to know what you're going to go in for.
Financial elements of.
If Dawn has the appropriate thing for.
We can't with that.
Excuse me, I'm talking, I'm asking Dawn if she has an appropriate reason for us, that she could supply for.
I believe that's Dawn's duty. I believe that's the commission's duty. For you to put that on someone else is irresponsible.
I think he was asking for the documentation to work that.
We've been warned by our own county attorney about going into executive session. So I suggest we heed her warnings.
We have one reason here to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships. Yes, Bob, you're an attorney. What do you think?
I would suggest that we don't solicit information from someone else's attorney for our own opinions.
That's a, almost a boilerplate, uh, sentence you'll find up in all across the country, you'll find things like that. We're almost word for word the way you just said it. There can be other reasons as well.
We don't have attorney-client privilege because attorneys are not.
I didn't mention attorney-client privilege.
Well, this isn't a trade secret. There's no transaction going on for trade.
I don't really think. If we're gonna go, it'd be attorney-client. She'd have to be there.
Why don't, um, we check to see if she's available?
Okay.
Okay. You have something else, John, you wanna talk about outside?
Just a minute. Yeah, check.
John, do you know the history of this table?
Um, Dan Leinke built it. The other table, I don't remember what happened to the other table.
Well, it used to be here.
Yeah.
It was kinda weak.
Yeah, so Dan Leinke built this, um, gosh, I don't know how long ago.
Prior to me.
Was it part of you?
She was with a client, but she's not, see if, she could come soon. So how we doing up there? How many residents?
I think this instance is pretty good. Yeah. Um, I'm going up with Kristen afterwards, but, um, I think we're like at thirty-two, maybe, thirty-three in the nursing.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and we're, wanna do some stuff in the assisted living. I rent those.
Yep, enable the.
Um, we are gonna be losing the director of nursing, Jody. She's gonna go back to school, get her advanced practitioner certificate. So we'll be recruiting for that. Um, I think though, other, we have a night nurse that we don't have right now. But, uh, other than that, we're in pretty good shape. We picked up a few staff this summer, which is kind of unusual. So, yeah, and we're not using agencies, so that's a big deal. You know, so it'll just eat your lunch. So. What's the latest with the engineer, the architect on that?
We got some letters today that they examined. Yes.
They turned down the bids that didn't qualify and the ones that we rejected and their state approval letter and request for, um, bond and other documents.
Okay.
You can probably get a copy of that if you want one.
Okay. What's the total is about? Is it seven hundred thousand or?
Four hundred ninety-three. I think four ninety-three.
Yeah.
It's in there.
Good. Yeah.
A little bit, a little bit of that.
Yeah.
There were some that were seven hundred.
Yeah. And, uh, the local person too? Yeah. That's great.
Straight point.
That's great.
Are you still looking at a three, potential three-year plan total to have?
Well, it could be if we did go in quicker, you know. It could be quicker. We now have our lease set up with the city. The option on the land, so we had to work through all that. And that's, uh, I think that gives us nine months to execute the option. So.
Jennifer will be here in a few minutes.
Sure.
It took longer to get the city on board, not on board, they were on board in May, or June. But the county was some papers that we had to do.
Government works a little hard. Had a terrible pace.
We gotta figure out those low, those low lots. I get it. When I start talking about that land, I mean, people will say, oh, you gotta check out that water, the water down.
They did, they did a lot of building up on the west side of the creek through there and the dirt they used to build that up came off the east side of the creek. So the elevation on the east side was lowered considerably.
Okay.
To alleviate the water going to the west side.
So if it floods, it's gonna go that way?
It should. That's where they dug the lock, that's where they dug the dirt out for the.
Okay. Because those are really very nice lots to use if we can, they're flat, easy to build on.
The last time we had one, we had, I was out there and Greg Babcock was out there independently. He got out of his vehicle, walked down in the rain to see where the water was and just surface flowed on the backside of the lots, against the trees.
You, you know, you could. You can't, you can't plan for the two-hundred-year range or whatever.
Yeah.
They happen or they don't. You might have two of them in a year.
Yeah.
Might have two of them in a week.
As long as the east side is lower than the west side, it should take care of it even, even if you're ahead.
I remember when they did it, they brought all the dirt off the east side to do the, to raise the elevations on the west side. So they basically created a spillway down through there. But I don't think. It, it's been up to within twenty or thirty feet of that house that's down there along the creek.
All right.
A lot of, a lot of people don't understand that they built that channel on the east side. Historically, where the water was before, yeah, that was an issue.
It was a problem.
But they raised the elevation or lowered the elevation on the east side, so.
Which puts more water on Lincoln Avenue's bridge.
What's that?
That increases the water flow through the park.
Probably, a little bit, yeah.
And the county, I think, still is responsible for the bridge. Congratulations, by the way, on that preservation.
We tried one time to do a joint thing with the city to replace that bridge and walkway to the school and a lot of other stuff that was involved in it, but the grant was denied.
You might wanna take another run at that.
At the grant?
It represents a potential safety hazard.
We're gonna start in on the whole work.
I would say shortly. I think they were wanting to go.
Get to meetings, meeting with our projection engineer.
It's all into our work, isn't it? Or is it?
Hmm, no, not all of it. The generator, getting it, the wiring to the generator and be, be signed. A lot of it will be.
And they gotta do the sewer.
Yeah.
That's outside. What the generator end up costing?
I don't know that.
I didn't have it break down.
Break down the generator itself.
I see we're in Florida. The governor is asking either one of those nursing homes to have a generator.
Well, they've been telling us for years that we were going to at some point have to add one, so that's why we started putting it back over there, huh?
Yeah.
Do the schools have generators?
No. I think so. Not that I'm aware of. We're blessed, you know, here with our own power plant that we can fire up and they've got the, they spent a lot of time through the years setting things up to where they could feed from different directions and stuff like that, cutouts. So they could get it back up pretty quick, easily. A lot of places don't have their own ability to generate power and that's where the real issue is coming. They may be weak without electricity.
We were on our homes for about a week, so we bought a generator, which I haven't turned on in the last fifteen years.
Do you, do you never start it? You might should, you might should drain the gasoline out of it and fire it up occasionally.
I don't know whether to sell it as an antique or sell it for best money or invite someone to fix it and make sure it does start.
Pump the gas out of it, pour a little bit of gas in the carburetor, it should take off.
It's a nice generator, Honda. Brush the carburetors off, you can see where the. Are there a lot of generators in front?
Oh, I don't think there's a lot.
Some.
There's a few around, yeah. A lot of farmers have, have, uh, a lot of those are power takeoff generators or very small electric movements. Jeremy has one when he built his house. He had one put in and it comes on every month or every two weeks or something and kicks off. And it really wasn't that mu, that expensive. As you said, you know, you can do a long time without ever needing one, you know.
Dawn, is that?
I just remembered.
I think we got that for you.
You had a flood over on the east side of the city.
That's through September.
Year-to-date, sixty-four or?
Yeah, that's how much budget is remaining, sixty-four thousand.
That's how much has been spent?
No, that's how much is remaining.
That's how much is remaining?
Yeah, you've used, the used column is how much has been used year-to-date and then the remaining is the remaining amount. And then, um, we still have property taxes that have to come out of that.
And insurance?
Insurance is already.
Is already out. So, uh. Is already out. So, property tax, what was that like?
Taking something, eight something.
Less than ten, more than eight.
Okay.
You started building in September yet?
Uh, no, we haven't. We're finalizing the lease with the county up there. They're gonna own the land and we're gonna lease the land. So we're just wrapping up our financing package up there. We did take over the management and ownership of the nursing home. The hospital has a long-term care unit, so we took over the management of that October first. So we'll get that going.
Is that separate from the hospital or attached to the hospital?
Well, the existing is attached, but the new one is gonna be separate.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Will they be moving into the new hospital in the near future or?
Well, that's supposed to be done next October, so we've been trying to, yeah. They've started on that, so we've been trying to match that so that when they close the old hospital, we got our new buildings up. We're trying to get that timeline.
I believe one of the contractors is working on that job, sort of, very informationary.
Good. That's good.
Hello, Jennifer?
Hello.
Hey, Jennifer.
Bob Graves is one of the.
John, I'm sorry.
I knew Bob, been spied cattle a long time. Uh, wanting an executive session, since we are leasing, he has leased with us some county property or nursing home. He's wondering if we could go in under cons, oh, gotta find it again. To discuss data relating to financial affairs of trade secrets, corporations, partnerships, trusts or individual proprietorships, is that gonna be appropriate?
And what are we talking about?
Okay, Bob, or John?
John, yeah. Um, I wanna just, I wanna give them a financial update on the, on the operation.
Okay.
Would that be okay?
Yeah, it's financial information relating to his business. That is not otherwise.
Yeah.
Subject to. Yeah.
Okay. And the attorney. Attorney is here. I would move with going to an executive session with, I assume you want Mr. Krangle?
Yeah.
Bob Krangle, Jennifer, three commissioners and Don for, uh, to discuss related financial affairs, corporation partnerships, trusts and individual proprietorships. Do I have a second?
Four.
For fifteen minutes, is that long enough, John?
Yeah, that's plenty.
Fifteen minutes, so.
You have to have a statement too. A statement describing the subjects, so it'd be the financial.
Financial conditions.
Yeah. Of the nursing facility.
Conditions. And how long did you say?
Fifteen. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, bring mood in second, any discussion?
Yes, don't all parties have to have pertinent information? We have our attorney and he has his attorney and I'm not sure what pertinent information Don holds for the discussion. I don't think you can include onlookers.
She's the county clerk and the keeper of the records, that's why I asked her to stay.
Well, these aren't going to be public records, that's why it's an executive session.
I asked her to stay, you have a problem, Jennifer, with it?
I don't have a problem with it.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Motion carried.
I, as a citizen of Lincoln County and a taxpayer, have secrets that I will not share with you.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh. Oh.
Yep.
I can maybe leave in that for me.
Yep.
Okay, we'll continue on.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to state the, the proposal since it's not part of the executive session?
We were proposed a four hundred dollar increase in rent by John Graves to help cover the costs that we incurred from non-payment of rent. For the last, I'm not sure how many months it was, fourteen months, something like that. But that's what his proposal was for the, the four hundred dollars that continued monthly until the end of the contract, which is three years from. Which would be in June of, June, you know, June or July of two thousand twenty, I forgot. I think we started June, didn't we?
Um, he said, yes, June.
So that's what we're taking under consideration. Okay, let's continue on with whatever was on the agenda that Alexis.
Did you have time to look at the state statutes under section seventy-five?
I certainly did, I certainly did. I did a visit with some people too. I guess the first thing that I would say is that the amendments are very clear that. The agreement was between the county commissioners or the county and O'Hare Law, therefore, since. Jennifer O'Hare, the county attorney, is not part of the commission, she was not part of the party, she was only the ownership of the other. Be no different than someone coming in here and offering us a contract and we agree to contract with them, they're gonna benefit from the, the contract, so. The statute indicates that the person has to be on both sides of the fence and in this case, the amendments indicate that. She was not on the other side, on both sides of the fence in the agreement. So that becomes moot. The other thing that I did go ahead and look. At was the Neelander versus Lincoln County case, which is probably one of the most recent to deal with county offices. In that case, it was the sheriff's department against Lincoln County, though I believe the county treasurers association, the county clerks association. Seems like there was another one filed briefs with the court on it. Basically, that came back and said that elected officials are. Equal in this county, that basically that was the way the checks and balances work in the county is. That they would be equal partners, that county commissioners, I guess authority would be the purse. And that distribution of funds has to be, uh, provide adequate office space and personnel and finances for. The other elected officials to run the business. It also referred to some cases of conflict of interest, county commission. Indicating that, uh, if you owned a business and you were a county commissioner, it was a conflict of interest for you to. Contract with that business. However, it also pointed out that the county commissioner could be selling items to a business. And the county could enter into a contract with that business without that commissioner being in conflict of interest. And he just needs to, when there is a problem, he needs to disclose it, he needs to withdraw from the decision making. So, uh, I think the questions would be, for the commission would be the power of purse. Are we overfunding the county attorney or adequately? I, I guess she is the one that knows what is required for her, for her office to function. And just as every elected official is responsible for their, their part in the county, they tell us what it's gonna cost. We can have some give and take, there's nothing wrong with discussion, but I think we need to keep an open mind with each other as we, as we deal with those problems. And we need to be able to cooperate in a way that that discussion can be open and frank. I am confident that, I felt that though Jennifer O'Hare did approach us to. Have employees move to the county payroll, I, I personally resisted because our county employees would be in a private business. And I did not think that was appropriate. I thought it was much more appropriate to do it under contractuals. The case on Neelander and Lincoln County also indicated that I read through. It seemed to me that I really could not, as a county commissioner, tell another elected official how they were going to spend their money. I cannot, uh, basically fire or hire their personnel.
So then a point of clarification.
Excuse me, when I finish, I will let you question me. So the point is that once that money has been budgeted, it basically is up to the elected official to spend that money wisely. And if they don't, they are, have to answer to the electorate and they will answer to some extent to the county commission. If there is something that they need that exceeds their budget and they can prove that it is necessary for their function. It is, it will have to be paid for by the county and the county commissioners will have to. One thing that does bother me at all levels of government right now is that the rise of McCarthyism seems to be rising extremely fast and. I believe in the nineteen fifties, we did not get any benefit from, from that, a lot of accusations and. I guess we call it now fake news, but a lot of people were, were harmed by that needlessly because of. That kind of activity that was going on. Now, would you like for, you may ask me some questions, I'd be glad to respond if I can.
Yeah, a point of clarification, you were just making a point with the case, I'm sorry, what was that name versus Lincoln? Ne.
Neelander versus Lincoln.
Neelander, that was the sheriff's name?
Yes.
You were talking about Neelander versus Lincoln County and you said that that. Basically ruled that you cannot dictate how the elected official will spend their money. Which means that the contract being paid to O'Hare Law from the Lincoln County Attorney's Office is at her sole discretion.
No, I'm saying that, that we said that that's the way she would operate her business and we would pay O'Hare Law firm.
But you're saying that we don't, you just specifically said, according to Neelander versus Lincoln County, we may not dictate. How an elected official spends their money, therefore it's her budget personally. She may do with it what she wants. And she is paying O'Hare Law.
No, she's not paying O'Hare.
Yes.
Lincoln County is paying.
Out of her, out of her, it's not out of our fund, it's out of her fund. It's out of the Lincoln County Attorney's Fund.
It's her budget, it's her budget.
Yes.
But she's not paying it, we are paying it.
No, you just said that she is solely responsible for how all of the money gets spent from her budget. That contractual payment comes from her budget, not from our budget, from her budget, over which we have no authority, according to Neelander versus Lincoln County. Which makes her a party on both sides of the agreement, as county attorney and as the recipient with O'Hare Law LLC.
We just approved the payables through the month.
Right, right, we just approved the payables, but that's not out, there is no contract. So by you sitting here saying that the county was a party to that contract, that's not true, I'm sorry, excuse me. By you saying that the commission was a party to that contract, that is not true. The contract exists between O'Hare Law LLC and the county attorney's budget, over which the commission has zero oversight. So I'm a little concerned about your assessment.
I would say that we decided that her office would be at O'Hare Law firm.
The location fit.
We would pay the county expenses for operating the county attorney's law firm to O'Hare Law.
We approved the budget to do as she sees fit. So what you're saying is as the commission, we have zero oversight on how elected officials spend their budget. But we do approve the total budget and we do get to look at those line items according to how they assess their own budget expenses. However, we are not party to that contract as the commission. That's like saying that we're party to the contract for the sheriff, which was the Neelander versus Lincoln County case. The commission is exempt from being, um, any authority in how that money is spent. So by you saying that we're approving that contract, you're negating your ar, your own argument for saying that Neelander versus Lincoln County. Means that we have zero oversight. So I would argue that Jennifer O'Hare is party to both sides, the recipient as O'Hare Law LLC. And the contracting entity, which is the Lincoln County Attorney's Fund. That's her fund, under her as an elected official. It's not our fund as the commission. I suggest we get a real opinion, not yours or mine, but a real one that has authority and weight. This will not be easily solved without some actual knowledgeable input from a source of authority. I move to request Attorney General's opinion. On Lincoln County. Attorney's budget compliance. With KSA seventy-five dash forty-three oh one A. And KSA seventy-five dash forty-three oh four. Regarding contract with O'Hare Law LLC.
You have a second? The motion will die for a length of seven.
Does that mean that we are knowingly engaging in this payment from, from the county's budget, the total budget? Putting that money into the fund and we are then allowing that money to be dispersed with its own oversight in a separate. In a separate elected official's hands. We are knowingly engaging in, in activating those payments as we do on the monthly, um, accounts payable.
We issued a check on that.
Yes, is that a yes, Terry?
Yes.
Yes, was that a yes?
What?
Was that a yes?
Yes for what?
We are knowingly engaging.
I asked her if we issue a check every month for that and she said yes. Your opinion, that's your opinion Alexis, you can have your opinion.
Terry, I'm asking for the Attorney General's opinion. I'm not asking for your opinion or my opinion or anybody in this room.
I think that you would ask for an Attorney General opinion weekly if we follow through with it.
I have asked for one Attorney General opinion in the last ten months and your sarcasm is not appreciated.
I don't know if that's correct.
Watch the videos.
I've never watched one of the videos.
You haven't looked at anything or done any work, so.
I feel like I need to watch a video.
Do we have anything else to come before this commission? If not, this commission stands adjourned until Monday morning.
It won't be so dark next week, I'll try to time change.
What do you say?
That I can help you?
It won't be so dark.
Oh, yes, yes. Was that okay? Yes.
You might do.
There's more information.
You had to do what?
A query.
Oh, cause I, otherwise I could only do with revenue and expenditures, so it, it wasn't.
Our difference is, well, we still need.
That's fine, yeah, that's fine. I haven't had time to break it down for myself, but yeah, I think that looks good. Thank you for doing it.
I've got me cattle, yeah, probably buy some this week, I thought about that this morning.
If you want a separate one for each thing, I would be glad to do that, but as I thought of a few things, I added them on there.
Acquire a few.
I can't, I can't, I can't afford yours.
Are you a farmer, you're still busy?
Like, is there a report for several persons, are you meaning? And maybe they'll understand it more than I will, but are you meaning like where, where? Bob says that he keeps a log of, we put five loads with the belly dump on six, yes, yeah. So I, I wanna know, you know, basically how much gravel was hauled, but I don't wanna just a total, I wanna. I wanna know how many projects, like did we have ten projects and we, and we hauled thirty thousand ton of gravel? You know what I mean? That kind of...
Okay.
Yeah, might be surprised. We're, we're getting over to the sale today and then.
How, how cold was it there, Terry? You want to watch it? How cold was it Saturday night?
You know, I, I should...
Committee members from the board's report tallying in twenty-six eight, twenty-sixteen, eighteen.
Yeah, you appoint a committee, don't you? Don't you appoint a committee?
Well, I appoint election board workers at each of the locations, is that what you mean?
Not the workers there, the workers that come here and gather everything and tally and put in inputs.
Um, the election boards each do their own, so when someone's bringing in their results, they bring their results to it. Advance, who is at here at the courthouse, does their results, like does their results.
Okay, so do you appoint those boards? They're called boards? Okay, so they write board?
Uh, no, I just wanna make sure I understand.
Yeah, board, yeah.
No.
Yeah, but you had them all picked, didn't you? You made the salsa gnarly.
And the restitution fund is kind of victims.
How about that?
Anybody can hang.
Um, yes.
Bring your medifying.
Yeah, no.
They won't, uh, they won't come when you want them to.
And then...
All one calls.
They got my right.
The one calls that the highway department makes, he ju- Bob just said, that reminded me to write that down. He said that if they pull the ditches, like if they're not just gonna scrape up the shoulders, like he called it, if they're actually gonna pull ditches, he has to make a one call to the state. So I just wanted to know how many they've done, you know, all the...
So just how many?
I mean, it'd be nice to know dates and locations. I don't thi- I don't think there were that many. That's okay, whatever they have, whatever they have.
Okay.
What it basically shows is, you know, some could be projects for digging through a culvert or something like that, but other ones would be pulling shoulders on the road.
I can allow the bankers to have to see, see what they have or anything. Tomorrow's the last day. Are you, are not having a meeting tomorrow? Tomorrow's the last day? No, they did it today. Okay. I'm sorry, it was... 'Cause it's Halloween? Need to visit with you on something.
From your meeting today, um...
Do you have any time this morning?
Yeah, I don't have to go very well. I can stand here actually. I brought some things. I need to file some of this stuff.
Is your camera still on?
Thank you, go on.
Yeah.
I'll see if I can get this on in. Hi, Ian. Hello. I need to ask you a question. Okay.